Okay, I'm gonna call and order the. Lennox Public Schools School Career Meeting of April twenty fifth, two thousand twenty two. And first order of business is to hear the visitors.
Mister Chairman, I am. I'm crazy Sartino, and I apologize. I know we have a full deck tonight with budget and everything, but the natives are getting restless. So I am here on behalf of quite a few. To talk about the new launched website of Lennox Public Schools. So, we voted not too long ago. And the vote was in favor to remain Lennox Millionaires. That we voted many times over the years. Every time we get a new superintendent and against you, it seems that somebody wants to change. Get a handful of new bees and. You know how it goes, but it's our history and it's who we are. Now. There's murmurs of perhaps the name trying to be knocked down again. School letter had changed, correspondence has been going out through the school with a different logo. It's an L with Lennox written across it. When the vote was L with Millionaires on across it. Now Lennox Public Schools has the new website. Highlighting the L with Lennox going across it. And the L with Millionaires is buried somewhere. I think it's page three. I'd like to know what happened to our town seal. Our town seal always represented our district. It's right behind you. This L with Lennox was newly created excluding Millionaires, more importantly, our town seal. Who created it and when was opposed to that? The town seal was our brand. We boast to be a high quality polished district with academic excellence. I am asking for you to consider. That if he brought back the L with Millionaires and our town seal to represent us as our mark of excellence. The way it always has been. This town gives an exorbitant amount to tax dollars and scholarship each year. I don't feel that's too much to ask. I appreciate your time and your thought. And I would appreciate it if you took it into consideration.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's. I support everything that Francis, by the way. But I'm here on a different topic. I know you're talking about diversity, equity and inclusion tonight. So the concepts of diversity, equity, inclusion. And social emotional learning are a clear departure from regular education, traditional education. So I have a bunch of questions that I hope will be covered tonight, not exclusively one by one, obviously. If not, I'll follow up, but they center on three things. Number one, why are we doing it? Number two, funding, how much do you propose to spend on it? And three, transparency, what are we paying for? With regard to why, I'd like to know, is there a state law driving this expansion? Or is DESI mandating it? If it is required under either of those. Can you provide the specific law or directive, a direction? If it is not required, then why are we considering it? The school committee serves parents and taxpayers, not DESI. And in the two thousand twenty one twenty six strategic plan survey, I saw no evidence for any respondents citing the need for diversity, equity or inclusion. Is there a lack of diversity of talent, life skills and expertise among staff or diversity of interests, aptitudes? And attitudes among students? Have there been instances where equal opportunity has been denied? Have students been discriminated against based on religion, race, gender or ethnicity? Is there any evidence that parents have failed to teach more ways effectively? I realize that students suffered prolonged isolation during COVID. But to what extent is that a problem? Social emotional learning is no remedy. Schools are not mental health facilities. We shouldn't expect teachers to be psychologists. Regarding the funding, we're coming off two years of remote learning when students nationally at least unquestionably fallen behind academically. How much time and money is planned to be diverted from traditional education for this effort? Whenever compulsory spending arises, there's sure to arise an industry to chase taxpayer dollars. And now sure enough, there's a world of diversity consultants who benefit from what I consider to be the diversity spoilt system. Do we really need to spend money on this industry? Given our competing needs. Finally, with regards to transparency, I asked at an earlier meeting that full detailed curriculum for current future professional education, student curriculum and materials concerning DEI and SEL be made available to the public. I'd like to know if that will be made available and perhaps online. And I'd like something more than just a link to DESI. I'd like to see some specifics regarding Lennox specific criteria and materials.
That's all I have. Thank you. Okay, correspondence. I had a, I had a letter today from Jim Broke. A parent of a kindergarten. Who was raising some questions about the diversity, equity and inclusion. And hoping to be moving slowly on the process and. That's a substance of the correspondence I've had. We're going to order for the school meeting minutes of April eleventh.
I moved over for a minute.
Second. Is there any further comment on the minutes? There are none. We have Veronica remote and we have David who'll be in and out of the meeting. So we'll call for a roll call vote. David Rimler.
I abstain. I wasn't there.
Veronica Fenton, I, yes.
We're in Cass, I, what much I.
Christine Mark, I.
Megan Kirby, I.
Well, fine, I. Okay, we'll move on to the super tense report.
All right, thank you, Mister Chairman. So we'll start tonight with highlights and commendations. Just a, a highlight or a point of information. As we return from the break, we have updated our COVID cases. Today we had four new student cases at LMHHS, two new staff cases and one new student case at Morris. So. We wish that no cases, but we are still doing better than we have historically coming out of a break. So cautiously optimistic. You know, we're watching those case counts closely to make sure that we're under the threshold. We came very close to it last. The last two weeks right before the break. But didn't reach the point where we had to trigger the JLC conversation. So if we do, we'll be ready to have that. But as of right now. Things look better than they have been out of previous breaks, although, you know, that will continue. We'll find out tomorrow's pool testing, so. Lots of information for those nuclear tests in the days.
What were those numbers again, Mark?
So we have four new cases at LMHHS. And two new staff cases and one student case at Morris. And that.
Staff cases were at Morris.
Yes, and then that pulls in data from, you know, only a week and a half issue. So, you know, when we think about the weekends and the week that we're all, so. It's not on a line with what we were seeing the weeks beforehand. But it's definitely better than we've seen from out of breaks previously.
And that's out of our pool testing? Is that what it's called?
No, this is outside the pool testing. So this is at home teaching tasks or self tests that have been reported to us. So during the pool testing. Logically, you would assume that we would catch some more cases because those tests are more sensitive. So if there are more cases in the population, they should be picked up during the testing tomorrow.
So what's our protocol now for people that come up positive?
So people that come up positive, the protocol is still the same. So. They remain in the nurse's office. We notify parents. Parents come and collect their child and they have to quarantine for five days. Moving on to better news, we received two donations recently. We received a donation from Dettinger Lumber. For lumber that was used in set production, construction materials for an upcoming musical at the high school, Into the Woods, on April twenty ninth and thirtieth. And a total that was donated has an approximate value of ninety four dollars and sixty one cents. And then I also received a letter from Mickey Nattoli. He is the engineering and design teacher and also the cross country coach at Woodbury Middle School in Salem, New Hampshire, which is right across the border from my hometown. So it's interesting to see that address come across. But he says that my father, Barton Toly, was the woodworking teacher at LMHHS for many years. Starting the fall of nineteen sixty nine. He was very passionate about teaching and woodworking. He spent many hours in the shop, enjoyed every moment. I thought I loved being part of the community and raising his family in Lennox. Sadly, he passed away recently. One of his wishes was that he would like to donate five thousand dollars to the LMHHS woodworking program to be used at the instructor discretion. I understand that there are policies and procedures of donating funds. I was hoping you could possibly point me in the right direction. Thank you in advance for your help, Mickey Nattoli. So according to our policy, you just have to have. The. School committee give you the go ahead to accept the donations and not necessarily vote on them. So I would ask that we have her approval to take those two donations.
So did you say you need a vote?
We do not need a vote according to policy.
I mean, I totally agree with it. It was great. It'd be our weekends. I'd drop by. He'd give me advice on anything I was trying to.
It's great. And then just a couple of coming events. Morris, May fourth, from five thirty to seven P M. Is there books before bed evening where we have guest readers coming in to read books as activities with the kids? Really excited for that event and. What I've seen so far, fantastic activities and then great books. So we hope we can make it up for that. And then LMHHS has two events coming up. I want it to be both on May the tenth. So the first one from seven o'clock to nine o'clock that evening is a symposium dedicated to the pandemic and its effects on education, featuring Emily Hanno and Stephanie Jones from Harvard University. So they'll be leading a panel discussion and sharing their expertise from their research around how COVID has impacted children across the country. And then on May tenth. Also at LMHHS, three, six students will work with educators from Berkshire Botanical Gardens along with Mrs. Kennedy, the librarian, to learn about the critical role that pollinator plants play in our ecosystem. Along with basic concepts of garden design, how to plant and how to work together as a team in designing and planting gardens in the reading garden outside of the library. That begins to, it's gonna be six Tuesdays beginning on May the tenth and including on June fourteenth. And we have to school each day for two, each of those six days from two forty five to four o'clock P M. The next item on the report is a discussion around the draft calendar. We started to talk about this last time we met and what I would encourage the board to consider tonight is tabling the discussion for a few days until my next meeting so that we have opportunities to work through a couple of issues. Obviously negotiations, I can get back to the calendar. But then the other thing we did have. A few folks reached out with some ideas around moving conferences in ways that might be better for families. And so they want to move them off. And I, I see that makes a lot of sense because it does dovetail closer with the end of the marking term. So the teachers feel that it would be more productive in terms of their discussions. And so that's something that we'll still have to work through the details and negotiate that with the union if we're looking to change how and when conferences may take place. So. I would ask that we wait until our next meeting and see if we want to make those changes based on negotiations or get some feedback from the LEA, have some suggestions from their members that might help make the calendar that much better. So really be moving up some of conference days. Be considering more evening time and maybe actually help us buy back one day for a PD day, but we have to kind of work out the details with the LEA.
And our next meeting is what?
The sixteenth.
Mark, can I interrupt for a second just for a clarifying question? Did we agree to remove Good Friday from this calendar?
So there was no agreement last time. There was some vigorous discussion and it was just kind of left open that.
I live in here, so I just didn't know.
It's still, the day off is still.
It just says no school. But we're.
Well, Mark, I have a question about fall sports. I've heard maybe it makes sense to put that on that first day, the twenty second. It might make sense to put that on the calendar since it's the very first school related activity to take place for the year.
And that's the earliest they can do is.
Twenty, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Certainly.
It just might get people in the swing of it.
So does anyone have a burning desire to talk about or vote on the calendar tonight or are we okay with?
I'd agree unless you need a motion to table it, but I think it makes sense to wait until we have all the information. Thank you, Mark.
Because otherwise we may put one out and have to go back and revise it knowing even just based on negotiations. So. All right. And then the next item number three is that superintendent evaluation. And I sent an executive summary to the folks in the school committee. As a link that goes to a spreadsheet where the superintendent's goals are listed on tab one and the second tab are the four DESI standards along with documentation and some talking points around some things that are important this year. So. The first goal. Aligns the professional practice domain and goals to complete the new student superintendent induction program. That's ongoing and as a source of evidence, I just included the law of when our content coaches sessions take place. The second goal aligns with student learning and it's the effective entry and direction signed with the district. Earlier in the year, they present our entry plan and shared that with the community, with the school committee. The culminating board is the report of findings and we're still actually working and building that through the NISA program. So we should have a draft of that probably by the end of the week. And then the plan for continuous improvement that's in development right now. That's a plan I'm going to put together some ideas around how we look at some short cycle improvement to make the strategic plan more actionable. Our strategic plan there eat big buckets, so to speak. And so the continuous improvement plan would help to streamline and focus the work over short cycles and so that we're clearly moving forward. And we gave a presentation earlier on that and that's linked in the sheet as well. For district improvement, that's the third goal. The goal is to maintain momentum during transition. And a lot of work has been done here, including the reviewing and establishing goals for future administrators through our goal plans, which are here. A complete formative and substantive conferences with each administrator. So. We basically had our mid-year meetings with each administrator where we looked at the progress and making of their day plans. Had discussions around their teacher observations and where they are with making sure that they're on track to hit all of those. And they were very productive conversations. The third piece of evidence that's linked here is ongoing visits and structural rounds at each school. And so instructional rounds are a very specific model of going out and as a learning team, doing observations in the field, coming back and talking about your findings and using those with faculty and staff to help them grow forward. It's a model that borrowed from grant rounds from medical community and brought into education by professors at Harvard University, Richard Elmore and Elizabeth Eythower. The fifth, sorry, the fourth point here was goal three was analyze the progress of the hundred goal plans. That was being wrapped up as part of the mid-year evaluations that's complete. And refine and enhance the district budgeting process. So this year, we put together a budget that took a look back at historically where we've put money aside and money that we've actually spent historically and used the five year average to reallocate resources in a way that made more sense and was more in line with our actual spending patterns. And so through that, we're able to, to save some money in terms of our projections for the year. Obviously with the budget, we know that year over year percent increase is actually one of the lowest we've seen in a while, but we know that revenue continues to be an issue that we're living with. It's kind of a legacy effect of COVID and some decisions that were made to limit choice to in particular during COVID. And then the fourth goal is another district improvement goal. That's to safely reopen and maintain schools during this period of the pandemic. And a lot of our time and energy and resources went to that this year. Some of the articles that I said there's evidence are the COVID routine safety plan. That was our number one. One of the sub-goals, I had a mitigation plan that we started back in the fall and have continued to use all throughout the school year. Included masking early on, but also routine pool testing and then addition of AHA testing as the year went on. Our second strategy was to continue with mitigation strategies and protocols and revise appropriate. We have been making revisions as the years gone on. Most recently by our COVID off-ramp efforts and setting up thresholds for COVID tolerance as we work to offer education with students in schools with a mask optional approach. And then the third strategy here was to promote vaccinations for eligible staff. And again, we worked with our LEA to enter into an MOA. Didn't require vaccines, but did require our staff to share the status of their vaccines. We also provided a mobile clinic to make it easy for our faculty to get vaccinated if they made that decision. So that's also complete. Now, when you look at the standards, I won't read through each of them here. But there's four big areas. Those are instructional leadership, management operations, law ethics and policies, family community engagement and professional culture. And so just some of the highlights. Again, the infusion of the instructional rounds, setting these kind of goal plans, I think really are helping to keep the focus on instruction at the return of COVID, along with schools digging into data-driven discussions using structures like multi-tier systems of support or building based support teams where groups of folks coming together each week, teachers, administrators to review student data, share information about students, about what the needs are, both for individual students and then also grade levels and programs so that we're being flexible and responsive to the needs as they converge in this school year. We also got approved for the pathways program, which we'll talk a little bit later on in the report, but that's another important step forward in terms of broadening our instructional pathways at LMHHS. We also were able to continue to offer remote learning opportunities for students when they're quarantined. Again, we got creative in working with the LEA to make that a reality. And that's what my family's found to be very supportive if they had to quarantine through COVID. Under assessment, again, we were looking at formative assessments during those instructional rounds. That was actually a more focused areas. The feedback the teachers were giving students as they were learning. So one of the things we strive for in this piece right now is just in time feedback so that it's not a wait until after all the instruction is done and then you have a test and then you find out after it's all done, will you learn or not? This is giving ongoing continuous feedback for growth all throughout the process. Also, we, if you've been to any of our events this year, we've had a tremendous example of multi-modal types of learning that's happening in those. We have students demonstrating their learning through projects, performances, exhibitions. We recently had a science fair at Morris where he did a great job sharing their learning that way. So always thinking of other ways to show off our learning other than just in the rise tests. Under management operations, again, we have a number of subdomains here. But again, we've been working early on in the year, certainly around safety with our local state police. Lennox, basically, and Lennox Fire to work on emergency management planning, talk about evacuations and disaster preparedness. We also were able to safely dispose of hazardous chemicals that were being stored in the chemistry storage area. But the last of that actually just picked up recently from the storage barn. We are also taking time to work with our stakeholders, including students, parents and teachers about the needs of students after remote instruction. We've had evenings with parents to share in person, virtually. We've had opportunities to talk to the students and we've had opportunities to come together at teacher roundtables and have discussions around what the needs are and that helped us to plan forward to support our kids. One of those discussions led to the need for another school adjustment counselor, which we need to hire recently at LMHHS to provide additional counseling capacity. Under human resources management, again, we've done a great job this year, I think, of retaining our staff and also successfully recruiting very highly qualified individuals for open positions that we've had. So I think that that's a positive development that when we are posting positions, we are gaining traction and interest. We have a posting out right now for a technology support position and really have fine applications in. So we're happy to see that people are coming back and applying for open positions that we have in Lennox. So we're also looking to continue to improve our human resources development. So we've been working on overhauling and getting down on paper in a way that's very tangible and transparent. Our entire hiring process from start to finish. We, a lot of that maybe lived in people's minds. We didn't really have that externally located anywhere. So now we have a way to be able to say, here's our process, I have a need to do. So that's a, I think, an improvement in our overall functionality. Also looking ahead to utilizing ASOP, which is a technology to help fill substitute teaching needs. We post jobs there, they comply, some jobs there and then that can all be done remotely and making that match. Also, we're in the process right now of negotiating new collective bargaining agreements with Unit A and soon Unit D, and that's going along well. We're continuing to work on our scheduling management information systems. We've talked many times about our schools, our student information system that we're currently training on and working to build out. So that's ready to run for next year. That will drive our student schedules and house all our student data information. And so that's going to really optimize our ability to do work at district and school level in terms of being able to access student information in one spot. Right now, that's a multiple places and seemingly easy tasks take quite a bit of time and manpower and packaging and re-packaging of data just to run simple reports. And our physical systems, again, I think that we put together a budget that was transparent, that solicited stakeholder input throughout the process. That's made publicly by hosting all our documents publicly. And again, using that historical look back to make sure that we're being fiscally responsible and not just parking money in lines that we always did just because that was our past practice. We've also closely examined these high resources throughout this school year and this year's budget before making any new hires or purchases. So Melissa has been, I think, a great champion in this work in terms of saying what really the rationale for why you need this or have you thought about using new resources or is there ways to build a schedule to make some changes that would help to reduce the need to make a hire. I think that by doing that, we've also been able to clean up and streamline some of our spending. On the family community engagement side, we've really ramped up our use of social media. In addition to our mass emailing and newly launched websites. In addition to our mass emailing and newly launched website to communicate with families so that they know what's going on in the district, where to find information. And so we've had, I think, tremendous success. Both in the websites too to tell, but certainly from the social media side of things. You know, tens of thousands of users who have responded to things that we posted. So we know that we're meeting people at least in that space and that people are going there to get information from the district. We've also used surveys this year, I think, to solicit input and feedback, particularly when we had big decisions or ones that might be sensitive topics. And I think that helped us make the decisions around COVID and some other issues. So, and then professional culture. We get really committed to having high standards for our students and our employees and we continue to work on making sure that our professional learning is connected with our instruction and making sure that we're offering the highest quality learning experience for kids. And that we're sharing the success of those who meet high degrees of performance, whether that's in the classroom or on the athletic fields or the arts widely and broadly, so that folks understand how well our students perform and we're not letting that information rest unshared. We're continuing, as DESI requires, to look at cultural proficiency, grow in that area. And so we've been reviewing all of our processes, procedures and policies as they turn vote to make sure that we're being fair, that we're being inclusive, that we're providing access to everybody. This is also carried into our admin team discussions where we have open and honest discussions when we have to make decisions, you know, who is this potentially leaving out? Who might be negatively or positively impacted by some of these things? And as we can even see in the calendar, sometimes things that seem like pretty small decisions, like figuring out, you know, way to draw family conferences on a calendar can have massive impacts on families. Or we have half days or four days. And so, you know, we want to make sure that we're being very sensitive about making sure that we're being in need of all of our families. Also, we've increased the opportunity for student agency. Students are taking a larger voice and role in planning of their education and educational experience at the school. Particularly the Lenox Social Public High School, who's planned a couple of their pep rallies and assemblies. Great job. We also have another student group that did surveys of students and their mental health needs and learning needs as they come back from COVID. And they shared a student-led faculty meeting with teachers and administration of LMHS to share their data and information. And I thought it was a great opportunity for them to engage in inquiry project that was student-led. Again, communication, it's kind of redundant in some ways because it keeps coming out, but we're utilizing multiple channels to make sure that we're getting those right messages out to the right people in the right ways. In terms of continuous learning, we're looking to, again, continually focus on our education and really linking together observations with feedback with the professional learning needs that result that from what we see in the field and then using that as an opportunity to continue to improve our teacher capacity, which ultimately should learn, data hires, student learning. Again, I talked earlier about the wide and pervasive use of data review. Lennox is doing an excellent job in that regard, both schools in terms of having structures where they regularly need to discuss student learned data. And our staff right now have multiple opportunities to continue their own learning, whether that's through conferences, coursework, webinars or other trainings. And so again, we're trying to make sure that we're committed to continuous learning for our employees as well as our students. And then finally, shared vision, and we're looking at the strategic plan to guide our work. We talked about the plan that made them build this kind of sub-plan of that, which is a continuous improvement plan to make some of those things actionable. We did share vision for the district and we wanted to know that complication. And then I did challenge our administrators and principals to develop 100-day plans that connect to our strategic plan and district visions. And moving ahead, we'd like to really work on creating a profile of graduate, which is a really tangible sign or signal of the type of student that we want to create here in Lennox. We want them to, with skills, competencies and knowledge they will have in the district as a result of going to our program. So that's also in discussions right now. I'm looking forward to building that as we move forward.
So I want to just jump in here and kind of cover under the new business, the distribution of the superintendent evaluation form. Is that, you know, I asked Mark to go through this and and highlight specifically the 17 areas that Megan, Veronica and I met and we looked over the 20 indicators under the four standards. And we didn't eliminate that many, but we did eliminate three. And, and then I wanted Mark, because sometimes you're, you're sitting filling the form in and you're wondering, how would I know anything about that? And so by, by Mark going through each of these areas as well as his four goals, we will at least have a, the ability to grade the form, you know, some knowledge. And that said, you know, in your packet, you've got the superintendent evaluation form. And what I suggest you do is save it, put your initials on it, because ultimately you're going to send it to me. Fill it in as best you can electronically, both the checkoff boxes as well as any narrative that you wish to do. And I would love to have it back by, let's say, the 21st of May. That gives us, you know, almost four weeks or we can make it Monday to the 20, let me see, what do we need, the 16th?
Yep.
The 23rd. You know, let's say Monday, the 23rd, so that'd be four weeks from, four weeks from today. And that would give me time to then file it for our GME. So that'll be the goal. So anyway, that kind of covers, you know, something later on when we back to you.
All right. Number four under the superintendent report this evening is a sharing with the community and the school committee that we've been granted approval for the pathways program. And so our guidance department, some of our teachers at LMHS have been working very hard on this for over a year now. And what they had to put together was nothing short of amazing. The minute is a voluminous document that they sent out to be evaluated. And so, you know, I think Tara and Pam and others have done an amazing job putting that together. And the letter that I received says, Dear Superintendent Goslin, I'm pleased to inform you that at a careful review, the Innovation Pathway Program submitted by our district has been granted final designation. Congratulations on achieving this distinction. We are confident that new innovation pathways in business and finance and healthcare and social assistance at Lennox High School will offer students a transformative experience, enable them to develop essential skills, gain awareness of future career opportunities, and make informed choices about post-secondary education and promising fields. This designation is issued as a five-year performance contract with annual reporting requirements and a full review after the first three years. Regular ongoing technical assistance will be provided to support your work. Details on technical assistance will follow. Kindly share this good news with your partners and you may direct any questions to Jen at DESI, who's the Innovation Pathways Lead. Sincerely, Jeff Riley, the Commissioner of Education. So again, great news and I think a really innovative way to think about high schools other than solely just having the admission of parent kids for college, that we can actually parent kids for in-demand jobs, making them college and career ready.
Well, yeah, and I want to congratulate the guidance department, Tara Romeo and, and others.
Pam.
Okay, I'm very, for doing this because this is a, an enormous step for the work we're trying to do for, for our students moving forward in these two, these two areas.
Thank you.
Mark, appreciate just a little bit about what, what's the next step now?
So. So the next steps. Now, we have to hire either a teacher for these programs or offer programs with our existing staff. We have to make sure we have the courses that align with these programs. We had to start to work with our partners and talking about how they'll supervise, evaluate students and report grades back and forth. And how to look at, how do we enter this into our overall ecosystem of course selection and all sorts of courses? And then there's grant money to support some of this, including the people who will coordinate this and the teachers that work within it. And then also, you know, that's kind of what we have to do in the near term moving forward. And then there'll be reports that we have to continue to supply back to DESI on the effectiveness of the program.
And so is there timeline-wise, is this something we can aim to have actually happening at least for, for pieces of it this coming fall?
Yes.
Great.
And then the final item on my report tonight is something that I shared with the committee. And there's a lot of pieces to it. So recently, the Attorney General and the MIAA, along with DESI and the Massachusetts Association of Schools Superintendents asked all superintendents in the state to join a webinar where the Attorney, Attorney General put forth a presentation that she calls addressing hate in school athletics, call to action. And they are asking all the schools across the state to make a collective commitment to addressing hate and bias in school sports and in your school communities. And the program, who have to opt into it to participate, and what they're hoping to do is have a training every year for all athletes, administrators and athletic directors and coaches on hate and bias and also have all of those folks that are involved with athletics take an annual DEI pledge. And then there will be a yearly educational opportunity or retreat for student leaders so that they can continue to learn how they can be upstanders and help them to combat hate and bias in their schools, in their school communities. So I shared the follow-up email that I got from the Attorney General's office. It also includes a recording of the webinar. If you want to take a look at that. And then also the press release from the Attorney General's office outlining the program in additional detail. So this is something that I like to try and gauge the support of the committee in terms of this is something that we want to opt into along with other schools across the state in terms of taking the, the call to action from the Attorney General and signing up to enter into this program to address hate and bias in school sports.
Do we have any sense of the problem of hate and bias in school sports? Is that a recurring issue in Lennox?
I would say that as far as we know, it's not a recurring issue in Lennox. We have received reports of language and comments during games from time to time. They tend to be kind of small, isolated events. But most of, I think, we're seeing in terms of hate and bias in sports tends to be centered in the eastern part of the state, particularly around a few hockey and football programs in your Boston and social region.
Mark, may I interject for a second? I, I know, you know, you're somewhat new to the district and, but I want to say that I, I think the fact that sometimes reports haven't been the top banner on the newspaper doesn't mean that they're not happening. I think that there are some concerns about whether or not students feel comfortable reporting incidents. I believe two years ago, maybe you can jump in, when there was speeches and discussions by students initiated by students around, after the murder of George Floyd, a number of students reported either at a public school committee meeting or also letters that were sent either to the administration or to Mr. Vaughn and some conversations, I think, and I don't mean to put you on the spot there, Mr. Vaughn, about experiences that students had in which they either didn't have an avenue to report it or at least didn't feel comfortable reporting it. And I think that to suggest that, and certainly I'm aware of issues happening in central Berkshire where it's of issues happening in sports and other fields and other locations, playgrounds, et cetera, in each of our schools. So to suggest that we are somehow separated from some of the vitriol and the difficult language and conversations that happen in places where children are either playing or engaging in sports, I think is I'm not really sure of the word. I think I just want to say that we should be aware that this is happening in lots of places and we shouldn't make an assumption that we don't have a problem. I think of the Attorney General and MIAA and all of these organizations are saying, we need to engage in a conversation. There's a reason for it. And I'm aware of some specific incidents in each of the districts in Berkshire County. And I know a lot of communities are trying to have this conversation. So I think it's, it's actually quite wonderful to have a statewide engagement and a conversation about how do we speak as one against hate? I mean, it seems to me that's pretty, you know, we talk, we, we, we give awards for sportsmanship. We ask students to have a code of conduct. We ask them to behave in certain ways. We try to encourage them not to engage in activities of alcohol or drugs or other destructive behaviors. So finding a way to engage in conversations where we are thinking carefully about speech that may diminish or harm another person seems to me exactly what we need to be doing. And I don't think that we have to have a a, a, a number or a statistic or an incident or, you know, I certainly am aware that there are incidents, first of all, in order to lead on this. And I think, well, we're not really leading, but in order to engage in the conversation. So I personally would really like to see us do that. And I can't imagine a better way to, to prepare our students for the world going to colleges and jobs and careers than helping them to engage in speaking and behaving in such a way that we stamp out or we step out against or we speak up against hateful speech. It seems pretty much a part of what we should be doing.
Yeah, and, you know, I'll just echo, I've been to soccer games and basketball games where behavior of students hasn't been exactly what we want it to be. And I've had to speak to students and people I don't, I don't know. Sometimes people I do know, sometimes a group of students who've been misbehaving and I don't, over the years, you know, 39 years I've seen my own kids play sports and stuff. And there definitely have been instances. And, and what I've seen recently haven't been racial instances, but I know that they have happened, you know, on playing field with Lennox versus other towns with something has been said to either one of our students or by one of our students to a opposing player. So it's not, and, and, you know, just kind of going back to the, the summer two years ago, I think it was two years ago, when we had the the thing in the park, some of my former students, students of color spoke up about their experiences in elementary school. And this was on me because it was during my time as principal when there were instances of hate directed toward them that, you know, we tried to deal with this best we could, but we're always successful. And, and these students now, 20 years later, are coming back and, and talking about their experiences, how it affected them in kindergarten in other ways. So it's, it's, it's real. It's out there. And it's, it's, it's disheartening to me that some of this happened on my watch as a, as a principal. We weren't effectively able to be able to tell the students. So yeah, there's, there is stuff that happens on the fields and in the classrooms that is not what we want it to be, unfortunately. So, moving on to the statement of interest that I want to promote.
Sorry, before we do that, I just, did, did we have to make a decision about whether we were participating in this?
So again, we don't need a vote, but I would certainly like the support of the committee if you want to move forward in this direction.
Okay, can I just ask one other question? Then you mentioned a pledge. Do, is that a prerequisite for participating in sports then? Would be to take a pledge?
It's not, it's not, it wanted it to be, but it's. All in to the side and there's some little challenges around that.
Okay, so that's not in the package anymore?
I think it's still there, but I don't think it's something that will be a voluntary, I mean, a condition that must adhere to or apply that it would be voluntary.
Okay, before we move on to the statement of interest, I do want to just reiterate the school play musical. Is this Friday at seven, Saturday at one and seven, Into the Woods, High School Students and. We have great performance. It's it's this Friday at seven, the twenty ninth and then the thirtieth at one and seven.
So, I'm sorry, Bob, I want to just, you know, because Warren said, you know, have we made a decision and I'm kind of. In a little bit of that same mode too. I think one of the thoughts might be helpful because we just got this particular link from Mark. Today would be to go and I began, I started to try to watch more Haley's, the opening presentation on that. And look at some of the documents and I certainly think that we should look at it and we should maybe table it to the next meeting and have a discussion and an actual vote. Because I do think we are currently subscribers to MIAA, we've had some conversations about the challenges of. What's happened, you know, I'm not suggesting we we don't participate in MIAA, that's what we participate in, so I don't certainly want to see our students. Somehow excluded from the parts of MIAA that's helpful to them and helpful to their engagement in sports. They also get awards, they get scholarships, and so I think we should, perhaps we could take the time to look at what Mark sent us. And put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
I know, I, yeah, I think it should definitely be on the next meeting.
Because it's hard, I don't think anyone can really make a decision without looking at it, so that makes sense.
Okay, I've been trying to promote Mr. Franceschi to be a panelist. You'll recall that we had solicited bids to do the engineering study at the high school. And Drami Rose and Anderson, DRA from Waltham, I believe. Were the successful bidders and they completed their work last Friday. We got the report last Friday and just in time for us to spend a week writing the statement of of interest. And Mr. Franceschi from DRA is here if we have any questions for him, maybe not necessarily. But we got a fairly extensive report about the existing conditions of the high school. With, you know, some potential numbers of what would cost to to remediate. For a lot of site issues as well as internal issues in the building. And this does not even include any of the asbestos, the scope of work that DRA was. Commissioned to do did not include looking at hazardous materials. So we don't have that and it's not, and and their work wasn't looking to talk about additions or renovations. So much as, you know, what are the existing conditions, you know, what are some of the things that they've identified as. You know, they had five priorities, you know, from one to five, five being code issues that things were not up to. ADA standards or whatever, but one being immediate need and there were no immediate need ones. There were some twos and threes which were a little bit further down. But they looked at, you know, they looked at the. Systems in the building, electrical, plumbing, HVAC, roof, all that kind of stuff. They had, we had a geotechnical study that was done that looked at the outside stuff, they didn't do any, any border reports. So they didn't do anything into the ground, they relied on existing data on that. As you know, we've had, the building has been there fifty seven years. And in recent years, we've had the issues where there was tiles popping off the walls in the. Nineteen sixty five, we're in the building, which we spent three hundred twenty thousand dollars remitting. But which have not resulted in a a full solution. We also have the six hundred and fifty thousand or so that we spent a year ago. On the asbestos. The asbestos abatement. Yeah, so Mr. Franceschi, thank you for submitting your report.
You're for having me. Be happy to do a quick summary if that's what you need or or just make myself available to answer questions.
I think a quick summary would be would be great.
Well, thanks again for for selecting us to do the assessment. It's great to reconnect with Melissa, we work with her over in central Berkshire. And and we we agree with you that that this is a. An important part of your statement of interest is to is to put forth to the school building authority. You know, the current conditions and and what the deficiencies are. So that you can get consideration to get into their into their grant program. The good news is that the the building has generally been well maintained and and the things that we identified in our consultants. Are not unusual for a building of this vintage, frankly. And you'll notice if you had a chance to review, there there aren't many priority ones or or priority twos even. There are a few, but again, it it's not as though there are things that are critical that need investment immediately. But there are many things that if you were to renovate, they either don't need code. Or they could be greatly improved with with a replacement. And and as Mr. Vaughn mentioned, there there are a lot of, for instance, accessibility and and code issues that fall into that category. That if you were to renovate, you you'd want to address, but you don't necessarily need to do that now. The the more immediate things. Are ones that that you might want to consider even while waiting to get into the MSBA program. Because as you might, as you know, it does often take several years before you get accepted into their program. We we've heard of many communities and districts that that's resubmitted their statement of interest five, six times sometimes. Before they they get accepted and in the meantime. The the school building authority wants to make sure that you you're still continuing to maintain your your assets. You're not like intentionally letting them, you know. Fall apart, you know, in in order to to. Be rated higher as as more needy or something, they like the saying goes, they like to help those who help themselves. So you you do want to continue to make investments in your facilities, but you want to be smart about it. The major ones that 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 are a little tricky are are things like the roof or the windows. Which you, you know, you you might not want to undertake those because those would be a significant part of a project. That you hopefully would get reimbursement on, but they are ones that would be, as you look at the cost, more major. Some of the energy conservation ones are ones you might want to consider. Where they do have payback and if it does take, even if you were to get into the into the MSBA program in a couple of years. It would take a few more years of design and study and construction before you actually, you know, reach the end. So you're going to live with your your facility, your middle high school for, you know, at least another five, six, seven years, no matter what happens. So there are some energy payback, e- energy upgrades rather, that have have relatively good paybacks. To consider lighting, low flow plumbing fixtures, the the heating system, some of those things. Are worth looking at. That's not what in our, what was in our scope necessarily to to identify, you know, exactly what improvements. But but those were on the list as as recommended. And otherwise, I I think the other thing that we heard when we and our team were out in the field was, you know, the concern about. The geotechnical condition of the building because there is, there are some cracks. And I think the good news there is we don't believe those are structural issues, we don't believe those are geotechnical issues. They are more just material issues of of shrinkage, they can be repaired. Some of them are due to drainage, that is another issue that you you probably benefit by taking a closer look at. Improving some of the drainage, both the the flashing around the roof and and how that drains. But more the perimeter of the building and the grounds to make sure that water is not infiltrating the foundation or causing some of that cracking. And so forth. And and that's a relatively. Low investment to to try and improve some of that drainage. Was was, I think, more the concern there than anything structural, which is which is good news. And then the other part, which was not part of our scope, I just want to mention as as you. Put together your statement of interest is the MSBA is interested in any educational deficiencies in your building. If you don't have enough classrooms or your science labs are not large enough. Or you can't teach the way you'd like to teach because you're lacking certain spaces. Those are important to mention in the in your statement of interest, in addition to our facilities assessment. But but I I congratulate you on on, you know, being proactive and 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 submitting the statement of interest. There is a lot of competition across the Commonwealth, but it's good to to get in now. Happy to to take any questions you might have. I know you had a relatively short period to review a fair amount of documentation.
Yeah, and the committee members haven't seen, Bob may have seen it, but probably haven't had a chance to read it. Bob and I are on the school building committee.
Okay, I see.
Yeah, so not everyone has actually seen it, but but we do need to vote tonight on the statement of of interest. And it will have to be read by somebody verbatim, so if somebody will.
Could I ask one question? And I apologize, you may have just said this and I just didn't understand the language. But my sense from conversations to date has been, there's been some concern for geological reasons and so forth. We really need a new building versus there are just things that need to be renovated. It it sounded like this report is more along the lines of. The building's probably okay, we just need renovations. Is that is that the right way to understand?
I I wouldn't necessarily jump to that conclusion. Our our task was to identify the physical deficiencies in the existing. Facility, which is a requirement of the statement of interest that you're about to consider. The 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 determination as to whether the building i- is worth renovating or expanding versus considering a new school. Is a whole nother question that would happen if you were to be admitted into the MSBA program. So we 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 wouldn't want you to necessarily conclude that because we've identified a a number of things that. Need to be improved or addressed, that simply by doing that list, the school would now be satisfactory and and. Be serve you well for the next fifty years. That's not necessarily the case.
No, well, I guess, and so let me put it this way then, I guess, there you didn't discover anything that precludes use of the existing building. In other words, it's not. There aren't the sort of fundamental structural things.
That's a fair conclusion, that there there are no deal breakers in that sense. But in in a in a future feasibility study, you you would be weighing these exact kind of criteria. How much would it cost to to bring the structure up to code? How much would it be cost to to address all the code issues? Those are things that are required as part of an MSBA project and you you have that much better data to to make the evaluation. And as I said, there's the entire educational side of the assessment too, that we're not privy to necessarily. That wasn't our charge, but would be part of a ability study as well. That you you'd want to compare the value of a a new school versus the value of a even a fully renovated school. Does it address your educational goals and vision?
Should we be getting at some point, we had the whole issue last year with remicelline. And asbestos abatement work, it was quite costly. If we were going to do something to the envelope of the building. Would that trigger? Some dramatic costs that we.
The the wildcard there is, there's a compound or chemical called PCBs. Polychloral bi vinyl. Famous in Pittsfield in in your neighbors, right? They they went into the creation of electric transformers. But they're also, they were in caulking and some adhesives and some mastic. And so buildings of your vintage nineteen sixty six, I think it was, some. May have included some of those in the window caulking, for instance, or in in some of the mastic of the foundation. And that's where it gets a little tricky, it that's one of those things that unlike asbestos where you can identify asbestos. And as long as it's not friable, you know, it doesn't get into the atmosphere, it's just contained in flooring or something. You can leave it, you do identify, but if you were to cut into that, you'd have to do it in a controlled manner and so forth. With PCBs, if you identify them, you have to abate, you have to. Mitigate and and take care of them and and it's a unfortunate kind of situation because it. It forces you to sort of be like, put your head in the sand and not not really look for it. So it discourages some people from doing certain like window replacement. Unless you're, you know, willing to undertake the entire cost of of that, you know, issue. But otherwise, doing the the kind of improvements to drainage and so forth would not trip. Anything from a building code point of view in the building itself. Or, you know, if the pavement is heaved in the sidewalk, you know, fixing that is not going to trip any any code thresholds for. Improvements inside the building itself. Basically, at this point, the the thresholds for inside the building are. The the primary one is if you were to undertake a project that exceeded thirty percent of the assessed value of the building. Then you would need to bring the the whole building up to code, up to handicap code. So one thing to do is to get your building properly assessed, by the way. Even before you think about doing any projects, because obviously, a lot of school buildings are undervalued. In their in their assessment because you don't pay taxes and so some communities don't necessarily keep it up to date. It it's best to go down to town hall and ask them to to more fully, more, you know, recently. Bring the assessment up to date and and then you'd have a better idea of what kind of projects you could. Building of, you know, a hundred thousand square feet that you have, you know, should be. At least something in the realm of twenty five, thirty million dollars. So that thirty percent of that then is what, you know, nine thousand dollars or or something. Eight or nine, eight or nine million rather, that that, you know, that's a pretty significant renovation. I don't know that you'd be tripping any thresholds.
Thank you. Any other questions for?
I apologize, I just I was just looking through your report, I didn't have a lot of time to go through it. Can you talk a little bit about the obsolete HVAC system?
Yes, well, it it's obsolete for a couple of reasons, I guess, in the sense that it's kind of. It it was addressed, I think, partially in nineteen ninety seven. But some of the equipment, you know, air handling ventilation equipment has like a twenty five year lifespan. So it it's right around getting near the end of its of its life. And of course, your boilers, they're, I believe, are dual fuel. I don't know if you're burning oil or gas right now. But both of those are fossil fuels and there's a big push to try to eliminate burning fossil fuels in general. And especially in commercial buildings and in schools, public. Not necessarily something you need to undertake for that reason alone, but it it would be an environmental and a and a sustainable kind of improvement. To to consider the boiler replacement. I think that's why our consultant identified that as a as a, you know, a recommended improvement to consider.
We we did three hundred somewhat thousand dollars worth of control, we worked on the controls a few years ago.
That'll help you with energy efficiency then, that's worthwhile, certainly.
Would that have to, I mean, would that be something that would be redone as part of if we were replacing unit vents and? Or is that, is that still?
There certainly would be a certain amount of rewiring. The controls itself is is basically like a computer and and so there there'd be software programming to reprogram it. That's a certain amount of labor. But in terms of labor of construction dollars. Depending on what kind of system you went to, there there'd be some rewiring. But again, your your system might well serve you even if you were to to. Replace those unit ventilators.
We're also going to take a lot of hits on railings.
On railings, that's one of those code issues that you don't necessarily need to address, you know, right now, but if you were to. To do anything relative to the stairs or or to trip that threshold, you know, in the building, you you'd have to upgrade. Railings, they they need to be a certain height and and the spacing between them as guardrails need to be a certain minimum. Or a certain maximum, they can't exceed a certain maximum so that. You know, children can't fall through or stick their head through or that that sort of thing. So. That that's one of the reasons that generally older railings, older codes rather, allowed. You know, greater spacing on, you know, you just had a top handrail and a middle handrail and sometimes that's it. Nowadays, you can't have anything more than four inches opening in a in a guardrail.
Okay, so the select met last Wednesday and they go to three oh two approve our sending up statement of interest. I do want to remind folks that. This is just the beginning of a process and and we're just trying to get MSBA's attention. And it took fifteen years for Central Bercher to get MSBA's attention. So this could be years down the road. We hope not. We hope that they'll pay attention to us pretty quickly, but we don't have any.
And also, if I could, your submission does not does not. Obligate you to any kind of financial commitment. It it's not. As as though you're, you know, approving spending money at at all.
Right, right. Yeah. So yeah, there's no no commitment made because obviously that would take whatever that would be, the town votes, you know. Maybe several town votes to to, well, it would take a lot of planning to what we want to do and it would take, you know, it would give many, many opportunities for. The townspeople to weigh in on that. But this is really just to begin a process that we hope won't be as long as Central Berchers. But we have to recognize that. As Mr. Franceschi said, there are a lot of towns in the Commonwealth who submit every year. And the MSBA evaluates them on the the need of their buildings. So. We. You know, we don't know if we fit in. We just. We need to submit. So we're in the midst of. Writing the strategy, the the statement of interest on and. Quite a bit of it, there's still quite a bit to go. It it will be submitted on Friday if the committee approves the submission. So I guess I would accept a motion to. To go forward with submitting it and it needs to be read with the exact phrasing that. Was sent out in the.
How how much of it needs to be read?
The whole thing.
Can we split it up?
So, Mr. Chairman, I will move that we submit the statement of intent for MSBA. As follows, resolved. Having convened in an open meeting on April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two, prior to the SOI submission closing date. School Committee of Lennox, in accordance with its charter, bylaws and ordinances. Has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form. Dated April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two. For the Lennox Memorial Middle and High School located at one ninety-seven East Street, Lennox, Massachusetts, zero one two four oh. Which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts. School Building Authority in the future. Priority one, replacement or renovation of a building which is structurally unsound or otherwise. Seriously jeopardizing the health and safety of schoolchildren where no alternative exists. Movement in walls and floor, exterior walls filled with remiculite infiltrating into building at all. Priority three, prevention of loss accredited accreditation, science classrooms last renovated in nineteen sixty-six. Not ADA compliant, do not meet twenty eighteen MSBA specifications for science classrooms at all. Priority five, replacement, renovation or modernization of school facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating and ventilation systems. To increase energy conservation and decrease energy related costs in a school facility, twenty-five year old roof, windows in a. Nineteen sixty-six wing plumbing at all and. Priority seven, replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with state. And approved local requirements, science classrooms, locker rooms, floor cracking separation, twenty percent of teaching faculty. Do not have their own teaching space at all. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting a statement of interest form, the Massachusetts. School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant. Or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts. Built the school building authority or commits the Lennox School District to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Is there any discussion?
I I hesitate to bring this up, but priority one of the she just read. How do we square that with the engineer's report that says? The majority of the school structure is in good condition.
Well, that's a question that I had in my report too. And. The. And and when I first spoke to the people at MSBA back in late January or February. They said, you know, most districts would file five and seven, in our case, three, five and seven. Because. One is they'll tell you whether. What they think ultimately. But, you know, obviously, we have students and faculty in the school all, you know, every day and, you know, we we didn't. We didn't expect that this would come in necessarily on saying that we were in, you know. That are danger. The the building should be closed. But. Because we're. Because slightly I've already voted this priority. I'm, you know, I am writing this section and I'm talking about. The. Largely, I'm talking about the exterior walls, you know, remiculite and the perception among faculty and perhaps parents and students. That they're in an unsafe, that that portion of the building is unsafe, you know, portion of the building. We did have to close for seven weeks last year and we periodically have to close classrooms today.
That's a fair answer.
And that's and that's the best I can do on that. Any other questions? Okay, now I'll call for a vote. It's a roll call vote. David Riddler?
David Riddler, aye.
Veronica Fenton, aye.
Forty past, aye.
Oh, much aye.
Christina, aye.
Megan Kirby, aye.
Bob, aye, aye.
Sure, I'll give you a shout out for getting that, well, tremendous amount of work done in a very short period of time. I'm very impressed with your hard effort to do this.
Well, there'll be a lot of writing this week and, you know, we hopefully will hit Friday and we'll be we'll be sent. I was writing all afternoon.
Well, your efforts are appreciated.
Thank you.
I was a doubt.
Yeah, but when you see the, you see the written stuff, you know. But we're working on it. And we have a lot to do to articulate the educational aspects. There are questions that. You know, are about the building and then there are questions about the educational programs within the building, how they're affected by the various things.
And that goes to some of what you were asking. That was great, but.
I mean, we know, we know the science classrooms have been an issue for twenty years or more and. And we've, you know, we had on our. Oh, I guess Mr. Franceschi's. Thank you again, Paul, for.
Okay then. Good. Thank thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Okay, bye bye.
You know, so we've known for years, in fact, at some point back around two thousand fifteen or sixteen, the. The potential. Capital improvement thing had like a million two for science classroom work. I mean. Who knew what the number was really going to be? But obviously, none of that took place. The kind, the renovations of science classrooms took place about fifteen years ago when. What used to be the teacher's lunchroom was turned into a science classroom. And then we renovated the old woodshop storage to be the technology classroom. But the three science classrooms are on the second floor of the high school wing and they had nothing done. And they had, I mean, you know, this is why compared to the meetings, but they have. Emergency shower drainages that don't have any drains. They have. Gas jets that don't work. They, nothing is ADA compliant. And so we we know that something has to happen there at some point and we're hoping, and that's really what triggered. In my mind, that's what triggered my start in the school building committee was to see, could we finally do something about those wrongs? With no clue what direction it's ultimately got. But that is the. That was the thought. Anyway, thank you. Okay, moving on, we have. DEI priorities timeline and funding in order. This is something that you asked to have put on the agenda.
Yes, and then this came out of, I think it was probably two meetings ago, where in the TLC subcommittee presentation. Ronnie had shared that there was efforts underway to identify potential DEI consultants. Which I had been sort of surprised by, given that we still have not even had our retreat discussing. How we felt about DEI, what challenges we thought there might be, or what we might do. And so, you know, I had also that as far as I knew that that we had not budgeted for it either. This year coming to an end or the coming year. And I just thought it'd be very important that we we be aligned on it. Mark has since shared the document, DEI contractor prices. And just bluntly, I was shocked by what's in here. There there seem to be three quotes. One, that would be seventy-five thousand dollars for one year of work and then two that contemplate a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. For three years of work. That have already sort of been proposals solicited. I think notes at least one interview. With the firm, but I also didn't want to sort of jump to conclusions on. What had or hadn't been decided. Sorry, I thought it might be helpful with. I don't know, which primarily TLC subcommittee or or Mark, just talking a bit more about. About these proposals, if this is sort of kind of what we're envisioning or or where things stand.
Well, I'll I'll just jump in here for a second. I think there are there are two or three things. One, the the cost is astronomical. And we're always not going to move forward. With that, we, you know, we can't. You know, two, the. The the work and recommendations will come out in the subcommittee. You know, at some point as to what direction to go in. But but more importantly, I think, you know, we we talked about having the school committee retreat. You know, we talked about it last summer, but we didn't get to it on the agenda because we had a long agenda and it wasn't the foremost thing. So I think that, you know, your idea of of, you know, our, you know, not moving forward. Without having had this school committee retreat is a is is a sound idea. I think the school committee retreat. Topic, you know, being this, as well as the subcommittee continuing their work. And and articulating what, you know, direction, you know, they might, you know, recommend for us. That makes sense because, you know, I I worked those dollar figures. I I was kind of stunned. And I I think that, you know, similar to what John said earlier, you know. There is an industry around. Around this as as happens when you have. Something, you know, like this going on. Now that said, I mean, Mark has come from a district that, you know, he was, he was, you know.
Well, I was I was on DEI committee, I was the chairman of the committee. But we created, yeah, a district level policy and I also worked. Creating state level policy that five hundred and one school committees. Across the video adopted as their, well, language. So it's not that's new by stretch, right? And it's intense pressure from. See, the Superintendent's Association and others. To really foster this work. I don't think that you can go to an MASC or a superintendent's. Training of any kind without this being part of the agenda. So many districts have moved into hiring. Dedicated people that are director positions, directors of different stakeholder inclusion. Again. We talk about the market that has gone around this and, you know, physicians have gone around it, so. You know, being taught, I began to charge early on and say, well, hey, what would be like a a plan or a framework that we could even, you know, put together? So that's what we kind of mapped out. It's very skeletal at this point, just because, you know. You can't just do a drive by and say, you know, oh, we did DI and we're done, right? Like, it doesn't really work that way. It has to be an ongoing thing. So we tried to look at it. At least a three year cycle. And making it something that has a little stickiness and something that would work to train multiple stakeholders over that three year period. That being said, you know, some discussions said that this work is best done with an outside consultant. So we started to say, well. What are those costs, right? And we had no idea, you know, what their quotes were back then. And we were all shocked at how expensive these things are. I think one of the, well, there's a few reasons for that. I think one is our. Location. So not a lot of folks are just in our backyard. There is one local cultural bridge who I was on a webinar with them for a nonprofit. Leader and CEO training and they did a great job. It's good as work as seen in others now. From what I understand, there's, you know, Bridge doesn't have the best reputation in Lennox for some historical reasons. So there was a real desire not to deal with with that outfit or organization. And so, you know, once you start looking at other organizations, then you're looking at Boston or New York or. Philadelphia, I mean, big urban cities and they have a little bigger than city race tags and all that pieces. So. I think it's one of these that's that's difficult and some of the work, you know, takes a lot of time. I think we're going to hire someone to do. You know, a review of your curriculum, like that's a lot of work, like looking at every single, you know, book and, you know, syllabus and that and so. Then, you know, if we wanted to hire to do that, that's a slog. You found yourself as a slog. I mean, so, you know, I do it, it's work. But I was just, like everybody else, very shocked by the numbers that we got back, you know. The cheapest one was seventy-five thousand dollars just for.
Sorry, it's hard. I'm sorry, because I'm on the screen. It's hard for me to see it. I didn't need to interrupt. Are you still going? Sorry.
I'd say maybe other models, right? So maybe like a train to trainer type of model or other, you know, things we can do. You can build, you know, building teams that work on this. I mean, there's other ways you can go, but if we wanted to. You know, hire a consultant to do the work, if we just kind of like, we're kind of phrase something around. That was the advice I would have.
So we learned something.
Yeah.
One of the things, Mark, thank you for that. Just to add on too, is if you recall, number one, I just kind of want to back up a little bit. Um, we all know that I'm just, full disclosure, I'm in a board of multicultural bridge, but I just want to reiterate that when we had our conversation about Bridge's work, the concept of whether it's a bad reputation, I think is really an unfair assessment because many people in our community have done a lot of great work and Mike Knible specifically talked about the full day conferences that Bridge came in and did, as well as some emergency responsiveness that happened a few years ago when students were engaging in pretty harmful racist and, uh, anti LGBTQ activity. Um, he praised that work and mentioned that students have actually come up to him later and said how great it was and how it was a highlight of their experiences. So that being aside, I think it's important to recognize that if there are people that would prefer to go in a different debt, uh, different direction or not be concerned about conflict, that's certainly part of what we need to do, right? We need to work with an organization that we all think is gonna meet our needs. And that brought up a conversation, Mark, that you and I had, or you had with our TLC committee about collaboration with other districts. So one thought is, since we are a small district, what is Lee doing? What is Great Barrington? And what are some other organizations doing relative specific trainings? Where maybe we can collaborate on a, and we do that when we do a multiple district, um, professional development trainings or safety try, lots of different trainings that we do where we engage with other districts and that's a way to spread cost across, right? So I think, Mark, you were gonna look into some ways that we might be able to be on some schedule. But again, we need to sort of plan, what are our goals? What are we gonna be doing? How can we do that with neighboring districts to help share costs? And what are some of the things like we did talk about, about train the trainer or having some people within the organization that want to become more proficient in some aspects of equity and inclusion in schools? And how we do that. So just kind of wanted to put that, which is really just a highlight of what you were saying, Mark, that we, we started from, we should break this out in a few years. We should think about what types of aspects of training should happen. And then how are we gonna engage? Let's talk to some organizations. So that's exactly how we got where we got. Similar to the building costs, which are even bigger num, bigger numbers, we haven't aligned it with a budget item. However, there are some professional development trainings that are part of the normal course of education that we as a school committee, you know, if we have an allocation of professional development or a teacher wants to take some specific training, that happens at the administrative level and we don't necessarily vote on that anyway. So, um, it's important to note that some monies are already part of budgets. There's also some ESSR monies that are part of budgets dealing with, um, social emotional learning or or other types of inclusive learning. Um, I just want to ask a question though. I, I guess I'm a little, I'm, you know, Orin, you, you referenced being shocked and I'm kind of shocked because we've had a strategic plan that went on over three years in which you were part of the committee and I was part of the committee. And you and I actually were part of a subcommittee where we talked about the needs that were assessed through multiple methods of getting information, including surveys, including faculty administration. And within that, and I, I produced a four-page highlight of all the different ways throughout the strategic plan that if we put it under diversity, equity, inclusion, I mean, you know, there's different words, right? We talk about the, you know, we have a responsibility under the Massachusetts constitution to educate all learners, right? We know that we have an obligation to educate all students. So how do we go about doing that? And when we look at Lennox itself, we think how are we trying to educate all students? And we've had feedback about the ways in which we need to do better. And we've taken that feedback and turned it into a strategic plan. And then we voted on the strategic plan and within that we have a number of initiatives that we need to work on. So I just run a, you know, there were, there was comments from a, from Mr. Barry and others saying that we're suggesting lack of transparency or something. And I really feel like we've been working on this since two thousand eighteen and there's also very strong feedback both locally, regionally and nationally and statewide about the need to look at our practices and education to ensure that we are teaching all learners. So you know, I feel like sometimes DEI has now become this thing, oh my God, you're doing DEI and it's like, I don't really know what that is. We have an obligation and a responsibility and I think a great commitment to educate all kids. And if we're falling short because students have needs that we haven't met, it's important that we understand that. And I think in Mark's, um, you know, discussion about his goals and how he's moving forward, and he talked about that a lot. How are we assessing, how are we meeting our needs? In moving forward with our track for students to be on more of a, what do we call, our new pathways program, that's to meet the needs of students. So I just want to be really clear when people talk about this and I do have a question because it's come up with both Mr. Cassie and Mr. Barry, although I don't, it's not to Mr. Barry, it's perhaps to you, Orin, is this concept of what we're doing not being traditional education. I, I don't really understand what that means or what that is. And I, I don't think we're doing anything other than trying to educate our kids and there's a lot of great work happening and there's some places where we need to do better. I mean, that's, that's what we're doing, right?
Yeah, I'd, I'd be happy to speak to that a little bit. I, I think the, um, you know, the strategic process is actually a pretty good example. Where, you know, we actually kicked it off in, in the middle of two thousand nineteen, um, conducted a very thorough survey with, with hundreds of responses from the community, went through a long process of identifying all the sort of emerging themes, created a list of seventeen areas to improve. Um, and DEI was not on it. Um, it was in fact, not until a year later, long after the process was in fact supposed to be completed, that DI and after the BLM events in, in sort of twenty twenty, that DI was added as a final item to the list. And so, um, I, I think it speaks a little bit to Mark's point about the sort of intense pressure to foster this work. Uh, that, that I would certainly, I think we would all acknowledge exists. But the question is, which way does that cut? One could say there's intense pressure to do this work, therefore we should do it. From my perspective, that, that intense pressure is exactly why we need to scrutinize it. And, and Ryan, to your point about the sort of, where does this kind of, oh my God, DEI come from? It, it comes from the extraordinary politicization from, from both sides that I think um, surrounds it. And so, you know, it feels to me, certainly having gone through the strategic planning process, uh, that this was not something that was a priority of, of the broader community at all. And, and in fact, again, if you go back and look at this strategic plan drafting process, you know, just an example, create more opportunities for career oriented students by extending internships and vocational training had been like an action step and it got deleted to be replaced with the DEI stuff in the final draft. And so my concern is that, that there are real trade-offs here and that the, the intense pressure that Mark is describing, I don't, I don't at all question that it's coming from Desi. I do very much question that it's the top priority for Lennox Public Schools. And so, um, that's, that's exactly why I, I really feel like we need to have a discussion as a full committee and, and decide what is our assessment of the actual need, what role do we want this to play? Before we head off down sort of, for instance, creating a three-year plan. I mean, I think it was, you know, one thing that's funny isn't, isn't the right word. I, I realize this is how it's often done. But, you know, in theory, the premise of an equity audit would be to see what, if anything, we need to do. So have a plan that says, well, we're going to do an equity audit and we also know we need two or three years of work after the equity audit, again, sort of feels like the cart is before the horse. So my ask of the committee would be that, that we press pause on continuing to go further down this path until we've actually had the chance to have the special of the committee say, what are the actual problems we exist? Where are they in the list of all the problems and opportunities that, that LPS has? Um, and, and therefore how much, how much attention and how much resources do we want to give to it?
Yeah, let me just jump in here for a second. Um, when I ran for school committee in two thousand thirteen and Francie was my campaign manager. And thank you, by the way. The, um,
We both need mental health.
One of the, um, reasons I ran was that we were working on the strategic plan. And I had the, um, strong belief that an important component of that was that every kid have a sense of belonging. And I wanted to make sure that Steve Cutler and P, PCG, I guess it was, um, got that into the document because I knew from, um, I was at this point retired for five years of the school department. Um, but I knew that there were kids who didn't have a feel, sense of belonging for a variety of reasons. Um, socially, um, uh, I mentioned earlier that the kids who, who didn't feel that these were our schools because they, they didn't connect, um, because of kids teasing them for one reason or other, racially or, or whatever reason. And I wanted, I wanted a kid growing up in Lennox to feel that these, these were their schools and that they could go to school and, and have a safer environment. Um, and so I think that the idea of the, the eye of inclusion has always been enormous in my mind. You know, Francie's talked a lot over the years about the, the non-college bound kids and, and that's something that, as, as you mentioned, was, was one of the things mentioned that got dropped, but it was, it was included obliquely in, in one of the sections, but not as, as strongly as it, as it should have been. Um, and now we've got some great work going on. We've had great work going on, um, in the past, but, but we, we do have attention with our guidance folks, you know, on that particular thing. But that was enough, that was a segment of the Lennox population that didn't always feel like the school was offering the program that they needed. And so, you know, I think that we, we've always had out there, or I've always had this idea that we want to be the schools that the kids feel like they want to go to, that this is their school and there's something there for me. Maybe it's a person there, there for me. Maybe it's, you know, whatever it might be. Um, I was talking to somebody the other day whose, whose daughter is a, um, this principal secretary at, at one of the schools in Great Barrington. This, this student there that she connects with and that's, and that's the only person that connects, you know, with that student. And this, and she's making a difference for that kid. And I wanted our schools to be making those differences for every kid. And there were kids we haven't made those differences for, who've gone to other schools. Um, and sometimes it's because of actions of commission on our part or actions of omission on our part. And, you know, and I want to see us do better, which is why I ran for the school committee in two thousand thirteen and, um, and, and why I feel that, you know, what we're doing on, you know, whatever you call it, access to solid education, including, it's hard to argue with equity and inclusion. Because we want it for all of our kids. We want, you know, I used to have a parent say to me, the decision you make about my kid in first grade, what math group they're in, is gonna make a decision whether they take algebra in eighth grade. And you know what? It was true. And so we did things to change that because we were realizing that there were decisions we made that were, that affected his education seven years later. And we took those conversations to heart because they were affecting real kids. And, um, and it's hard when you're in education not to listen to a parent say that and say, and then look at your practices and say, yeah, we are doing that. We are making decisions at this age that are affecting this kid seven years later and then affecting, you know, a, a lot of the rest of their education. And that's, I guess that's what all I want to say is that I think that there are, there are organic ways that we deal with equity and inclusion and maybe not as well with diversity. Um, but there are organic ways that we, that we are trying to deal with it that, that go beyond the label DEI.
Just gonna point out that, to me, it's extremely ironic, um, that, you know, like Orin mentioned, that was taken off of the list for the plan and replaced with the DEI. Um, getting rid of that doesn't seem very inclusive or equitable to me. Um, so there's some irony in that. I'm just kind of surprised if nobody else is, is seeing that, you know, I, I, I didn't know that until Orin just mentioned that. And I would, maybe this is a conversation for a later date, but what made us feel like that was more important than what was already on that plan?
I, I just want to say quickly though that it, I mean, whether it was, whether Orin has tracked every sentence and every change, which I'm assuming he probably has. When I think of inclusion and I think of diversity, it includes the fact that not all students in Lennox are on the same track for learning and don't all learn the same way. So I just am really concerned that in, Orin was on the committee and when we voted for it, he never raised a concern at that point that something was awry. So I just really want to kind of push us back to what our goal is, which is to decide how we want to move forward and not have some sense that somebody slipped something in for political reasons. I was on the committee from the very beginning, as was Orin, I believe, and that might have been the first time we met and realized we were neighbors, is the idea of how do we educate all kids? And so this concept that somebody slipped something in for political reasons is what's really causing me to kind of say, whoa, whoa, you know, this is one of the wonderful things about Lennox. And I think what we've been modeling on this school committee is the way in which we can engage in conversations and we can disagree about how we're gonna spend money or what we're gonna do, but we are, have a universal charge to educate all kids. And if we ultimately make decisions that leave kids out of it because they either can't function in our schools because we don't have the facilities or because we don't have a track for them or because they are somehow harmed in our buildings, then we have that obligation. So I really want to kind of say, you know, we voted on this after it was completely done and vetted and it was, no buddy was saying, hey, something got slipped in. So this concept that it's a partisan issue or that it's a new, you know, two-sided us versus them, I think we should just pull back from that and say, how are we gonna move forward to make sure that all our kids are educated? And also that our curriculum and our books and our items are up to date and that we are teaching our students in, you know, in ways that prepare them to go out into the world. And I think that's our charge and that's, so some suggestion that something got slipped in, I think we need to like pull back from that because that's not accurate and we all voted and we all were part of that. And there was quite a lot of writing and rewriting and redrafting that happened. So uh, you know, when Megan, when you say, I just learned that, I want to suggest that it's not my experience that that's what happened. We were all part of it and we had a number of conversations and went through a number of iterations about the things that were priorities. And I think even the pathways program shows that finding ways to provide multiple pathways for students is a priority and we're doing it. So I just, just want to say that.
Yeah, I want to clarify, I didn't, I don't think I said anything about slipping in. My point about the timeline was that the point at which this was added as a serious discussion and point of emphasis was far removed from the community survey. And that, that interpreting the strategic, that the fact that we did a survey and then we did a strategic plan should not be interpreted as a causal connection between what the community survey showed and this part of the strategic plan. And so, um, I, you know, I, I especially appreciated Bob's comments because I thought he did a really nice job of articulating at, at least for, for my part, exactly what, what I think is most important about this work. And, and I want to make sure that we, that we do focus on. But, but I also think that, you know, I, I take somewhat from his comments and emphasis on the extent to which we now do. I mean, it's, it's not twenty twelve anymore. And, and I think, you know, there's been a tremendous amount of progress in how educators understand this. Well, we've already incorporated into professional development and so forth. Um, obviously the expertise that Mark, Mark brings. Um, and, and so I certainly don't intend, in my premise to suggest that, that, that that's not important. My question is just if we're thinking about what are the major opportunities and priorities for incremental work? It's, it's not clear to me that, that this is what will be at the top of the list. And, and so, you know, I, I think we all have the same information now. I, I don't mean to belabor the conversation, but it, it is, it's at least my view that the committee-wide discussion of what we are actually trying to achieve and how we want to proceed needs to proceed, both further work by the subcommittee and, and certainly anything that might, um, might commit us to any expenditures. So Bob, if it's in order, I, I guess I'd like to just make a motion to that effect and give the committee the opportunity to do that.
Um, yeah, I mean, I'm not sure a motion's necessary because I think that, I mean, my perspective would be, we, we want to have the school committee discussion. I don't see why the subcommittee can't also be talking some things.
Yeah.
Um, before we spend any money, this, it's gonna come before us.
Yeah, well, it is there. I, to, to, I think Ryan made the point, there is a bunch of possible ESSR money. I don't, I mean, I remember when the ESSR slide issue went up. It had twenty-five thousand dollars for DEI and twenty-five thousand for SEL. And so the minimum, I'd want to make sure we don't proceed with, with that expenditure before we've had a discussion. With that expenditure before we've had a discussion. But if, if we're on the same page on that, to your point, it, it doesn't mean a motion. I just want to make sure we're on the same page.
Yeah, I mean, I think that. We, we had our retreat in summer, then we had our next retreat and we, we, we didn't end up discussing DEI, maybe because of where I put it on the agenda. And we decided we would have a separate one. And I guess I've been kind of waiting because I wasn't sure whether we were going to have. Somebody come and talk to us or whether we were just going to have a conversation ourselves. And, you know, I think it's probably time now, we'll have a new committee. I mean, it's going to be the same old committee, but. Um, we'll have a new committee in, in May. Um, and I think it might behoove us to have that conversation. As soon as we can, you know, when we get started. In, in May. With the committee, um, after our next meeting. And then, and then that doesn't preclude. Ronnie, the TLC committee from moving ahead and, and continuing to talk about this whole, the whole plan for how. Things might go out.
Yeah, no, I, I, I think that's perfect and, and hopefully that will lead a lot of, of the discussion. Uh, but just on the, on the ESSR money is, is there, is that queued up at this point or is that just hypothetical?
All right. So I guess I just wanted to comment. I, I get the sense. In several of these conversations, the people are coming into the room. Already packed and loaded based on events and things that are outside of this district in this room. And I just want to remind everybody, we have a very nice working arrangement here. People talk. Let's just try to constrain ourselves to things that are actually going on in the district and not get carried away or get caught up in events that. Are maybe nationally happening. Um. You know, we're, we're kind of a unique district. We're small, we're municipal. We have some. Some really great people everywhere. Um, but let's just make sure we, we look at the facts on the ground and what we're doing here and not get worked up over things that are. Way external to our little district.
Anything else? Okay, moving on. Subcommittees, have we had a subcommittee? You have, okay.
Yeah, um, HR has continued to, um, LEA, it's been on for.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's true.
For a long time.
It was your best subcommittee.
Yeah, and we'll be meeting again tomorrow.
Yes.
Which will be done tonight, right?
We, we, we have another one scheduled for May second, but we think the work will be largely done tomorrow. We're hoping. Governor Solis is meeting next week.
We don't have to have a.
Oh, no, no, we don't. His finance is meeting next week. Yeah, yeah, we don't, yeah, we don't have one. Finance meeting next week. School building committee, um. We've already talked a lot about.
Bob, just one thing on finance, because this was the last, our last meeting before, um, town meeting, I believe. Both the finance committee and the select board have now voted against the school budget. Which is something that I imagine we'll discuss for the finance subcommittee meeting. Um, there may be nothing else for the full committee to do, but I didn't know if there's anything. We need to discuss.
It gets, um, come down to maybe what I say at town meeting.
If, if, if it's, if it's, is what it is.
I'm all ready for this and stuff. I voted two weeks ago when I was waiting to find out what finance and. Board's like, and Chairman Lewis like called me this morning to tell me how it's going on. It's regrettable, but, um, we'll. Chief of Lord, I mean, how's your?
We have not met since our last meeting and I actually, first statement to my fellow, um, committee members that. We are scheduled to meet on May fourth and I may have to request a postponement to change that because I, I might have to be out of town. I'm just trying to firm up that. Schedule to be sure that. Whether I will or will not be here. So I'll send an email about rescheduling if we need to. Hopefully we won't have to. I'll get back in touch with people. We haven't met since our last school committee meeting.
Okay. Um, we can, oh, can you adjourn?
You're making or inviting?
No, I, I, I accept the motion to adjourn.
I don't make the motion to adjourn. I was so excited, you never make the motion.
No, no, I don't.
All right, I move me adjourn.
I'll second.
Non debatable? Veronica?
I.
Podcast, I.
One month, I.
Christine, I.
Megan Kirby, I.
Bob, I. We're adjourned. Thank you all.